All right, we're going to call it to order about 5:03 I think. And we don't actually have any other meeting back then that's in the end, right? This is just us. Very good. We're hoping Robin and Spoon come soon. No guests to go around yet to say hello. So then we could go on to taking a motion for the agenda and the warrants and the minutes. So moved. Second. Seems like I had something that I saw on the minutes.
Question. The next thing is, are you going to decide if we have to put it through?
Right. That's the discussion. I was thinking there was something that I saw on the minutes that I was wondering if we wanted to have clearer or that if everybody. Let me just see. I think it was in the diversity part. Well, I guess during the second meeting in January, the board would like to check in with Lyle regarding the meeting she and the leadership team had with Martha Allen. Was there any other? You two weren't here.
I watched it.
I watched it as well.
So was there any other like definitive? Was there any other definitive action that we wanted to take? It seemed like there was one more action out of all that long conversation that maybe...
There was an action considered but not passed.
Right.
And that was the only? That was the only?
Yeah, the sense I had was that Lyle was going to look into the opportunities that that initiative offered.
Yes. So at this point, we've... I'll just break you down. Jen, come back to you. Yep.
I have one change or not addition to the...
Okay. For the minutes?
For the minutes. In the Spoon's review report from the annual meeting, the last sentence, but it will only happen this way if it is very deliberately set up and aided by the school board and administration. The "and" isn't in there.
Okay.
It's an important distinction.
So it should be school boards and...
Yeah. Yeah. To be consistent. It's the school boards and administration.
What was the date of this?
Minutes?
The date of this meeting?
This is November 7th.
November, you know, the...
Seven.
Seven. Thank you.
All right, so then shall we vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Right.
All right. That takes care of that. Back to the agenda. So I'd like to make a change in the agenda and move the administrative reports to the first thing we do before any committee or anything else because I feel like we jipped people last time.
I was watching the video and it seemed like there was 15 minutes left and somebody pointed out that this is the meeting where we have the administrative reports, right?
Right. Jerry was particularly...
Correctly. And then Jerry went first.
I apologize.
And you were really short.
There is no reason to apologize.
No, it was good.
No, you were right.
You were right. And you went first and you were really short to make sure that everyone was accommodated. So tonight, we're going to let you go last so that you can speak as long as you want. So I'll start with you.
Okay. So I need your approval to submit our annual refunding application for Head Start and Early Head Start to do on Saturday. And the dose and duration application that I've been talking to about, both of them are ready to go pretty much. I sent you some information about it early last week, Monday. And basically, just to highlight the refunding application, we're proposing no changes, no significant changes. This will be the end of our five-year continuation funding, so next year it will be a big to-do again. So I write a pretty comprehensive packet then, and then it carries us for five years. And the dose and duration is an opportunity for us to get about $143,000, $142,431 to pay for Head Start services for the Canal Street children to have a fuller day. So yes, they already have a full day, but it's not being funded by Head Start completely. So this is going to help us in big ways. So I need your approval to submit those Friday afternoon.
I make a motion that we give Deb approval to submit what she's written in chair of this already?
Submit.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So I'll pass these your way, Jill, for your signature. Things are going well at EDS in putting all of the information together for these reports. I did an analysis of staff turnover this year as compared to what we had last year. This year it was 9%, which is really great. We have about 70 employees. Last year it was like 21%. So things are improving this year, and I hope that we can continue to build on that We had policy council last week, and I'll let David speak to that. New members, and we will be not holding a meeting in December because there is a New England Regional Conference is happening next week, and hopefully we'll get some parents to join me for that. Our policy council chairperson, Liz Gainsworth, who was voted chair every year a couple of years ago for Vermont, is interested in potentially becoming a national Head Start rep from the New England Board, so fingers crossed that she decides to do that. And I don't have much more to report. I think you've got a monthly report recently, so always good.
I'm just going to piggyback and say 9% is exactly what Broward Town turnover was last year as well.
Wow. Interesting. Good. That's probably bad for you. That's good for us.
It's pretty normal.
We're starting to keep that record, retirements or asking those who are willing to share relocating, whatever, gone back to school, maternity leave, whatever. Just so that we have an idea moving forward, what is, do we have an approximate percentage each year?
And that brings to mind, I analyzed the 9% and three were folks who were not a good match for the position. One retired and the others left due to pregnancy or moving out of the area. So none left with better-paying jobs.
All right, passing on to Kathy.
Okay. I don't have a report because it's not a report time, but a couple of things. One is we hired a parent position that you guys had approved about a month and a half ago. Our hire is Jocelyn York. She started on Monday, and I'm really excited to have her onboard. She's got a background in mental health, special ed, behavior, and also some really interesting restorative justice and gender studies work. So I think she'll be a great fit. She jumped right in with two feet in the kindergarten and yeah, I'm just excited that that's in place. Other than that, we got sort of a surprise phone call to tell us we got awarded a $500 grant from ExxonMobil.
Nice.
Which is kind of exciting. That's to be used for math or science, so we're hoping to bring in a science. I think last year we got it and we did a science assembly, math-science assembly. So we'll do something along those lines for kids. And the only other thing is we had a fire drill today. That went well. We had our Westby Fire Station partners there, and they time us and they just kind of tell us what they see in terms of how we could do it better. So that's nice that they have a presence at each fire drill.
And it wasn't frigid.
And it wasn't frigid. We tried to plan accordingly with the weather. I think that's it. Is there any other exciting stuff?
Yeah. We have a new structure in the forest area which is completed, and especially our younger grades have started to use this three-wall structure in the forest, which is a really nice addition to our campus. A couple of parent volunteers constructed the building. It's been a nice addition.
Will you be able to use that all winter? Will you shovel out to get to it or...?
Yeah, we won't shovel out, but kids will jump in the snow and pack it down. Yeah. One of our kindergartens spends all day, one day a week in the forest. And then all of our other kindergarteners use it on a regular basis, and some of our, actually many of our other classrooms are out there throughout the weeks. It gets a...
This is the first year that we're trying that, right? We have one all-day.
Yes.
And what's the feedback so far on that?
Very positive. Yes, very positive.
Which teacher is it?
Emily Markham.
Emily Markham.
She has really championed the forest program, so she secured the money to purchase this structure and has really done a lot to advance that space for her class and for the rest of the classes.
She also wrote the grant for all the outerwear that the kids use, and she's got some volunteers that come every week to, all day. It's pretty great.
Now, will there be any temperature guidelines?
Just the same as a recess.
All right. So if it's frigid, frigid cold, they'll be inside?
Yes.
And what do they do outside all day?
A lot, they do. It's really fascinating to be out there. So they do a lot of sort of structured exploration of the natural land and some problem solving in the woods. You know, she might structure a construction project that they have to sort of problem solve around materials.
Sometimes Beek comes and joins them, and they built a fort recently with Beek. Investigated sandmanders that they found.
Yeah, they do some food preparation out there in the woods, and they use fire. There's a fire pit that they've dug out. And then now with this building, they can do some more, I wouldn't say traditional architect work, and it's still outside of the forest, but in the shelter, bring in some literacy and math activities.
But there's no roof. It's only science.
There is a roof.
There is a roof.
There is a roof, yeah. It's like a lean-to. If we come watch it.
It's really fun to play outside with them. It's pretty great.
Is it always on Tuesday or...?
Thursday.
Thursdays.
I would have liked the presentation in September.
We'll let you know in bed.
I'll see.
Okay.
Do you want to leave?
Sure.
Passing over to Mike.
We had an all-school celebration right before we left for the November break. I'm going to have Kelsey talk about that.
Sure. So the third and fourth grade team was responsible for planning this celebration, and we came up with the idea to create Wings of Gratitude, which you'll see behind you. So on each, each grade level was given a color, and we did this project with our buddy classes. And on the feather, you were supposed to write something that you were grateful for. And so then kind of the idea was to put them together so that students could take pictures in front of them with their arms out, kind of like you may be saying in Nashville, that sort of idea. And it's been really exciting so far. I've seen kids up there wanting to try it out, wanting to get their picture taken, and so that was pretty exciting.
And Kelsey's team did a really fabulous job planning that. On November 9th, we had a bear visit our playground.
That was insane.
That was awfully exciting.
Let's put that in the app.
Did the bear wake the fellas?
The bear showed us how to climb a tree.
I have Fox as an academy.
But, you know, I think we responded really well. Immediately, we made an announcement to restrict access to the playground, called the game warden, robo-call families, and end of the day dismissal. We actually had all of the lockers dismissed from the library, and then staff members walked to them all. So it was quite an event, actually, and I think we handled it really well. And it was, the kids were pretty excited.
Do you know when the bear left or...?
It was about 8:30 that night.
And he just came down and wandered off on his own?
Yep.
Came to our house and ate some pumpkins.
Those were the squirrels.
And just that...
It was nice that that was in the paper, though, and the whole process and the thoroughness of protecting the kids was articulate.
And then nobody came and shot the bear? I was like very thankful for that process.
We hosted a very successful craft fair on the 19th. It was a great event. The PTO was, just did an amazing job putting that together. And then we're happy to be back at school.
It's kind of erratic schedule.
Well, our all-school events both got canceled the Friday before. We were supposed to have our first family breakfast. That got canceled. We're hoping to reschedule that Friday, December 14th. And then we had our school-wide celebration, our second. That was, well, I think we're rescheduling that to this Friday, which I think it's just a couple of days. I don't know. Days are all messed up.
So should I write down the next blizzard in my calendar?
Something that I would, you know, like to highlight, the generosity of our extended Oak Grove family. Our Thanksgiving baskets, we prepared 22 Thanksgiving baskets for families anywhere from families of eight to families of three. We had our turkey donations and our veggie donations from Albert's, and all of our families, you know, bring in an item. Usually it's like pre-K had to bring in cranberry sauce. Somebody brings in stuffing, et cetera. So we were, we also had three baskets donated from Braderboro Church of Christ, eight baskets donated from Rivertown Church. So we were certainly overwhelmed, and it's hard because we keep a list of families. I mean, there's a growing need for more and more families looking for some food donations because of food insecurity and to be able to have this Thanksgiving feast that they hear about, they see about on television. And, you know, we're able to do that. And the hard thing is for my office team to kind of go through our list of families and to kind of say, well, you know, they have to kind of, this family has gotten it for the last like two or three years, so they should be moved down. And we were calling some families on Tuesday afternoon because the donation just kept pouring in and saying, could you use a basket? Could you use a turkey? And they were just like, yeah, I'll be right there. And we actually were even able to offer a couple baskets to our staff members that are also going through some hard times. So it was a very, that is certainly my biggest highlight that I like to share in terms of, I mean, the generosity, like I said. It takes a, it takes a village, and so it was beautiful. So thank you for everybody out there that helped to bring much joy, and I know it happens in all the different schools, so. The other thing I'd like to highlight is about our pre-K program. Is okay, Deb? Can I announce this, right? I just want to bring up. So our pre-K program has to, well, you apply for a star program. It's like a self-assessment, and it's a very long and tedious process, one that I'm thankful that I did not have to do, but Maureen Young did it for us on our behalf. Because we are connected with Head Start and because we also went through the federal review just recently, it also helped to balance since we were able to use a lot of that information. Because what we do is we are doing an assessment and then we have of ourselves and of our program, but then we also have to provide evidence of those areas. So the five areas that they're looking for are compliance with state regulations, staff qualifications and training, interaction with and overall support of children, families, and communities, how thoroughly providers assess what they do and plan for improvements, and then the strength of the programs, operating policies, and business practices. Generally speaking, a brand-new program, if you get three stars, you are golden because then you, you know, they give you supports and they tell you, you know, here's how you need to improve. I got an email from Maureen and from Deb that, because I kept saying, is it in yet? Is it in yet? Because we send everything and then they come back after they evaluate. And Maureen, was it last week, I think, right? We're a five-star program. We are. Thank you to Deb and her team and Maureen and certainly the team at Oak Grove. That doesn't, that doesn't often happen. So now we have a lot of work ahead of us to continue to make sure that we maintain that five-star level, so we're very happy about that. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Was there, before you go, Lyle, because you were going to make a point of anything diversity-wise, if there was anything that happened that you might want to draw attention to. Like that, it's what we deal with. It's just a question that we were going to try to remember each. I don't know that we've had that many school days, actually, since we met last. Thanks, Lyle. You're welcome.
I believe it's three.
Next meeting.
Well, there was a training that our counselors attended during the in-service day, so we had the two in-service days. So there was a training with gender difference. I don't know the exact title of it. Do you remember?
Gender socialization.
Yeah. It was looking at transgender sex, you know, it was just a lot of around gender and gender differences and gender biases and diversity in that sense.
That's great. I'm glad you tell us because I don't actually ever know what professional development goes on, and I feel like that's the type of, well, the diversity piece is great, but also just to know what it is is really helpful because I do hear that as a school board member from the people all over town, just in general, like why are our kids not in school yet again? What could the teachers possibly be needing to learn about? So it's great anytime you want to throw those things at us.
We had Kari Smith come and do a presentation with the staff. She worked with us last year.
Who did that?
Kari Smith.
No, Jerus.
Jerus was Shay from the Women's Freedom Center and Mel Motel from Restorative Justice. Yeah. And those, that got very, very amazingly rate beat that group up. I was blown away at how well-received it was.
And who does the professional development? Like Just Oak Grove did that piece, and Green Street did something different?
So with the gender piece, it was WSCSU-wide counselors, some parrots, some teachers from different schools, so it depends.
Social workers.
Social workers.
And they choose themselves which one they want to go to or...?
It depends on what's being offered, so I would assume that you did Reading. So the Reading Street, so the people teaching Reading Street would have done that. It depends. Brian Bitner, the literacy coordinator, did a training for some schools. Teen Reed.
Did you read the math?
Yep. Did some math with the... So it depends on what is really the focus of the school. But a math, a math PD might not be the best thing for the counselor and the nurse and that type of thing. So we try to make sure that we have something for everyone, but we also, in those November days, have like a chance for all the music teachers in WSCSU to get together, all the PD teachers and that type of thing as well.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, it was called Gender Socialization and Circle Process. Looked at gender and identity themes, gender socialization. And I didn't go, so I don't know what the circle process is, but...
It's a process they use with restorative practices. It's part of the work that Mel Motel does with the restorative sector.
If it was a restorative, I get that, but sorry.
A couple of things I found in your report. One is I saw an article about DCF and the restructuring and getting more responses or more communication with parents. And one of the things that they pointed out was that they get more referrals from families that are having financial difficulties, not being able to provide food, for instance, to their kids. They get more referrals from those issues than from others, which is really was surprising to me. I thought that, that people just can't provide food. The kids are going to have to take the kids out of it, away from them because of poverty. So that's really, you know, obviously providing food is a really important part of...
Where did that come from?
It was in the, it was an article in The Digger a few days ago. And the article was about a parents' organization criticizing the way, some of the ways that DCF operates. Since the children died in custody a couple of years ago, they've really tightened things up and it's very structured, and it's, some parents are feeling like they're not, they're not being, they're not able to even participate or know what's going on or get to talk to a doctor or talk to any caseworkers or things like that. So it was a much larger article, but that one fact, that one detail is the thing that stuck with me.
All right, Lyle?
So I want to give you the newest financial calendar. I'm not certain that Broward Town has had any dates changed, but I do know that WSCSU has had some dates changed in their timeline, so this...
May be timed.
Pushed off a day.
We've pushed, right. So tomorrow and next week is the WSCSU board meeting. We're still, as always, hopeful that we're going to get the preliminary figures from the agency, but we also know not to hold our breath for that. And do you have budget update here somewhere?
Yep.
Okay, so we can wait. Kelly, Mark, and Jerry and I have been meeting with Frank and have other meetings set with Frank, so we're on it. I was going to do a policy. I've been doing a policy update with all boards. With Robin and Spoon not here, I'm hoping that they will watch this segment of the recording.
I can email them and ask them to make sure.
Okay. So one of the, some of the feedback from my evaluation was that boards would like to spend more time on policy. So I had sent something to Jill just finding out who actually wants paper copies because you know all the policies are found online. And what we've done is we, Barb now, Housekay and myself, gone through our policies, looking at those that are needing to be updated sooner rather than later. And then we've divided them into sort of three categories. Those that we just need to redo three readings and there's not really any work to do, some that are pretty easily updated, some of the VSPA statutes may have changed, and then some that probably need more work than others. And so in the WSCSU meetings, we will be including policies. There will be something from each of those categories, so we're not always working on the hard ones at the same time. The procedure for policies is at WSCSU, we review the policies. We have three readings. The third reading is generally adoption. You should come back to your individual boards and talk about those policies so that at the next WSCSU meeting, if you have suggestions for changes, they can be included in the policies. And then, once the policy is adopted, it's your responsibility to remove the old policy from the manual and put the new policy in.
It's my pleasure to have in the manual because mine has these new policies in there, but the old ones aren't out yet.
Oh. And then...
It's a mess.
There's table of contents in the beginning so that you should be able to, they're not tabbed. But they're all online. And the, online is the same sort of categories that you have right here at the table of contents.
It's not as daunting as it looks.
No. And then there's dividers between each one. So that's the, sort of the process for policies. You also have local board policies, and those, if you would like us to review any of the local board policies, we can start to put a couple of those on your agendas.
We have local board policies for those. I think I have... Remember us? In my time, did you remember past?
I don't think we have any that are different than the SU. Burden had some that were different.
If I turn here, local board policy, fundraising, so we have, it was Head Start early, we have all the Head Start early starts, which are all local board policies.
So when they came in?
Yeah. So... Yeah, so...
Two thousand and seven.
Two thousand and seven is that one, though I remember us updating it, but apparently...
I think I actually need to circle back to you about that policy council that's finally done reviewing, I keep forgetting to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Going to burn it.
So, there are dates, like the fundraising was two thousand and six, so it's time to look into these.
It's not current, my time or yours, I'm taking the date, so...
So, it doesn't look like you have any, but it does look like you have... So that's policy.
And you wanna look at what specifically, early education?
The governance, the governance and conflict resolution policy. We talked about it, we discussed it.
I remember a stoneman, maybe we decided to vet it through policy council, which we just did recently, and then bring it back to you. If you think of it, can you send maybe Barb this?
Straight here.
There's other, yeah.
Oh, the numbers are on there. I'll copy it if you please.
Okay, okay. And lastly, this year, we have a request for a sabbatical. It's been probably many years since we've had a sabbatical request. I've brought the contract negotiated teacher agreement language. You will see in that language that I need to, very quickly, pull together a committee that includes a board member and a representative appointed by the union. So, I would need you to please appoint a member to meet, and we will review the sabbatical request, and then make a recommendation whether or not we should support this sabbatical request or not.
So I told Lyle when she told me this was up there, I don't remember ever hearing about this, because I don't think we've seen it before, but I would be willing to sit with her as the representative, but unless somebody else feels...
No, that's fine, I think it's, it's a year off, basically, with the right to return, there's not salary or...
They would be asking for salary, this person, yeah.
Because I think once we've approved of the pass, you didn't...
Yeah, and that could be...
It was just a P.
Yeah, and that, you know, there's a little bit of a difference between a leave of absence and a sabbatical. The sabbatical has more tie to it.
Sure, sure.
So, and whatever, that, we would sit, and then we'd bring it back to the school board, would still discuss and vote?
Right, and you can see that there are some hard timelines, so we, it has to be submitted to me by December first, we have to make, need to make that decision by December fifteenth, so as a board, it will need to be on our next agenda, because that's our last meeting before December fifteenth. And then, approval is always pending the school district's annual meeting, which at this point is a little bit up the middle. But it could be March, end of March, before the final approval goes through.
And the ten days notification is after our meeting.
After the meeting, yeah.
Great, thanks. A couple of budget questions, Lyle?
Wait, do we need to officially make a motion?
Yeah, you should probably do that.
Okay, let's move to appoint you?
Yeah.
I moved to appoint Jill to sit with the administration and the union to consider sabbatical leave application.
Any discussions, all in favor?
Yes.
So that's officially done.
The staff requests, the staff submitted their requests and rationale on the nineteenth, or is that, I'm looking at the line, I guess, did you have one or have this, has the staff read?
Are you on the budget?
The budget, yeah.
It goes on to budget updates, new business, A.
Oh, okay, okay, and I got it right in front of me here, too.
That's all right.
Trying to stick to the agenda, because the last time I made it confusing to Kelsey and I made Jerry upset, so trying to be good. All right, so, and I didn't even get us out of here on time, I made my, my daughter didn't care, but anyway. So I think we're on to committee reports. Policy council, David, Jerry.
Yeah, the, we elected a really full house, full building, I think six or seven new policy council members and alternates from Broward and from Westminster.
That's great.
Really energetic bunch.
Do we have community reps and such, too?
Yeah, well, we have the same committee rep, was there?
We have one, a new one, but then she declined the day after, so...
That's right.
We don't have any new community reps, so it's Molly Oldsby from Windin Northeast, David slash school board, I don't know, I'm missing one.
Well, I am, I think that's my technical designation, isn't it?
That may be it, we have, yeah, so just the two, so we have, we have slots open if anyone's interested.
But this is, it's a really good resources, and people experience all aspects of the social service situation and the, you know, the education system, it's just a really good group of people, so that's gonna be an exciting year. And it's very likely with that many new people, we'll get something other than the roll-ups and remain sound like this typically sustenance at the meetings, get some design or something in there.
Strong force from Westminster. It's been, it's been a dynamic shift in the last couple of years, so, and very different, very different perspectives, there are very different levels involved.
Yeah, and energy level of parents.
So moving to energy committee, no meeting, right?
Nope.
Alternative Governance Subcommittee, that's you, too, David?
Nothing there either.
There seems to be things in the paper about people ready to file a lawsuit, is that the...
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's gonna happen for sure. The, in fact, the board adopted the default articles and the plan that they talked about, I think, two meetings ago. So that's done formally now, I think the chair presented it with the adsept, then the lawsuit will be filed pretty soon. I'm not sure if it's, you know, if it's worthy, there'll be an injunction, if not, it'll be a long drawn-out process.
Who files?
What's that?
Who files a lawsuit?
The four attorneys that have come together to do that.
About representing who in our...
There are twenty-six different school boards that have signed out of towns, or school districts that have signed out.
So from WSCSU, it's...
I think Westminster decided to, or not Westminster, Windin Northeast, all four towns, three towns, four towns, decided to, no, the meeting tonight, that was the email I sent around to, the meeting tonight to talk about it.
But in our supervisory union, who's filing a lawsuit?
I think only Westminster.
Vernon Henson?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I haven't seen it lately. It's, you know, obviously, it's not a public group that's sharing, or you guys on a blog or something, they're working together, so it's a constraint.
Finance?
We, well, I sent emails out to everybody. I sent, I saw them about an hour after Frank sent them today, but I forwarded them as soon as, as soon as I saw them. We have another meeting tomorrow. I did bring my copies with my notes of what we've gone over on the SU budget. I know, let's see, there's a new communications position that's in the special ed general fund, in terms of something that's new.
That's a communications.
The... I had communications.
The new position at the central office?
Yes.
So that, with the changes in healthcare?
Yes.
We have to have someone who is able to...
An administrator type, yeah.
To follow all of the rules and regulations as set forth by the IRS.
They're basically submitting information weekly.
So they're communicating healthcare?
Yes, and, and if they don't, if it's not communicated on time weekly, there's a three thousand dollar fine for every single instance.
For every employee?
Yes.
That doesn't get, yeah, it can be very costly.
For every employee, three thousand dollars?
Yes.
So for one mistake, we could be...
We could get nailed.
Yes, so there...
Okay, so I guess that position was not a real difficult one?
No, no.
It's ridiculous.
There's, David, you can look at these and Jill, just my notes, yeah, but it has my notes on it, these have my notes, so if you wanted to...
Besides that, are there any other new staff?
New staff, well, there's the one, there's the half, halftime position for diversity, which we've talked about before.
That goes in the next budget, so the position wouldn't be hired until then?
Won't be hired until after that budget process.
So it could be hired as early as March?
Yes, I don't think that there was any in, there's nothing in the grants. I know that a big change, obviously, is the transportation, I know it's a big jump. Frank had tried to get for a student to extend the, extend theirs by another year, the contract, and they said no, so there's a, there's a big jump there.
But that's already for this year.
Yes, but the other thing that, when you look at this year, is there's a big jump in transportation, because Guilford is now a part of it, and they have never been in the past, so that shows a pretty big increase for this year, so...
And, just looking at my notes quickly, I think that's the largest one. David, you're welcome to look at my notes that I took on individual items.
You're gonna, you're gonna draft tomorrow?
Yes, so, and then we can talk about that next Wednesday, but I know that you have the draft, so you can look at it, that's the one that's getting presented tomorrow, so you can kind of see that, and then I will have notes on it for next Wednesday.
And the meeting tomorrow is the one that also has a superintendent evaluation target?
So, yes, so any, and I think that's on our agenda, Spoon, if he's available, if not...
I haven't heard anything back from Spoon at all, to any email in like the last month, so I am kind of concerned.
All right, well, in that section of the meeting tonight, knowing that Kim will be there tomorrow night, if you have any feedback about the job description, you might give it to Kim, just so that we're certain that it gets reported and shared tomorrow night, because that's probably the main thing, other than reviewing the last sort of drafts of that budget, the main thing is reviewing the job description.
The only feedback is general, it's overwhelming.
It's very...
When you keep, you've got a little check for every month, you go down and check the box for all of these, it's really, it's, it's what happens, but it's amazing to see several pages of the...
So, sticking to the agenda, we were at committee reports for finance and executive committee update, we don't have any more updates, right?
We have not discussed that.
Because I think we all kind of agreed that we'd wait and see what happened the end of November and lawsuits and all that. Diversity, Robin's not here, is there anything more?
Did Robin talk about the fall showcase?
Yeah.
Okay, that, I don't believe, there hasn't been any meeting since the fall showcase.
Okay, we've done administrative reports, there's nothing under unfinished business, so then under new business, I think we should jump to G, superintendent job description, if there's anything else, I think we just covered it, just to make sure. Any other comments off of what we've read? Overwhelming, that's to take that.
That's my notes.
And that Kim will be our representative tomorrow, should Spoon not be there?
Correct, I will be there.
Although, if Spoon is there, I suppose you have comments anyway.
I can tell him beforehand. It won't be difficult to pass that on to him.
Okay, so then we'll go back to A, budget updates. So, this would be the moment that David's asking about, do we have any exciting new things or anything you want to tell us about and make us aware of before...
Well, no, it was actually the budget, the budget request and rationale that we had asked to see, we used to get it regularly, you know, whatever you first submitted, we would get to it.
I don't think you're at that point, though, yet, are you?
Okay, well, it's just, it's on here, and I can't, I'm drawing a line across, it's either the eleventh, nineteenth, or twelve, ten, but obviously, we're not in time for it, it doesn't matter.
So, principals are meeting Friday, right? Friday, you're, and Friday, you're meeting tomorrow, I thought it was Friday.
We're scheduled next week.
And you're next week, so we're continuing to work with Frank and try to get things in order.
It's the biggest thing for me, and probably, I mean, a lot of schools have done work, but Academy's been sort of talked about for a few years in terms of, what are we gonna do about the White House and the big projects, so that's a big thing that I'm meeting Frank about, it's kind of like being a homeowner of tens of millions, trying to learn, like, about doctor work and all that, so I don't know yet, I don't have anything to report to you specifically, but that's what we are, but I'm looking for guidance on from Frank and Lyle, we're talking about it.
We had a lot of...
It wasn't in that job description, was it?
We had a lot of this.
It's a big building.
We had a lot of talks about the White House.
They used to call the job buses boilers and boys, I think.
So, I remember the discussion last year went along a lot of ways, like, you know, you leave it, it's already passed, it's, well, it came to us at the end of its expected life, and we've used it and kind of done other things with it, and I remember my feeling, though, still, is to represent to voters that we have a decrease in population, and yet we need to build more space, is a really hard sell for me. Even to try to sell to the voters, it's hard to sell to myself. So, looking at that White House, that's, I guess, kind of a fair warning to you, that that's my thought going into it, it's like, how do, what happened, and I'm very aware of the Academy building space when you walk through and how closets have been turned into many classrooms and whatever, so, yes, but I, I need to be shown why we need to invest eight hundred thousand, almost a million, the last I saw, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on...
No, I think that's, that's really the question, and, yeah, I mean, looking at moving students around would be, would be an alternative, which is one of the reasons to see what the numbers are over the year, and, so, you know, that's, that's my concern. The other thing is that...
Yeah, and to take that even further, David, before...
It might make sense to move some of those kids down to Guilford, you know, and fill that in.
So, and that's one of the things, when we met with Frank last week, or right before Thanksgiving break, we started putting together lists of how many kids in each class, and thinking about, so what, what spaces are we considering? The social worker at this point has no place that's private that can be, she can meet, at least at Cavy, that she can meet with families, so there are things like that that we need to start taking into consideration. Our numbers are dropping, but our needs are increasing, and so we have to take that into consideration as well.
And the vice principal space is ridiculous as well, I mean, I mean, I know that there's a lot of things that are...
Yes, they're betting to get through the doorway.
I forgot about that, even.
It's supposed to put your stuff.
It's supposed to put a stuff, basically.
And really remembering, too, that we're replacing space, we're not trying to add a lot of space, so the space that the White House takes up, square footage-wise, I don't anticipate a building being that much larger, it's just going to be better serving our needs, it's gonna have privacy, ideally, spaces where instruction can happen and private meetings can happen.
But I like what David said, too, and then I have another question on the merger, of, you know, does it, if we look at numbers, does it make sense that we do two kindergarten classrooms instead of three, or that we can merge? And I think we, as a school district, need to be looking harder at that all the time of, okay, so Academy's really tight and needs one more space that's private for a social worker, in the conglomerate, how many do we have of fifth graders, and how many classrooms should we really have?
And it's hard to think about, you know, we tend to want to keep siblings in the same building and keep people close, as close as we can to their neighborhoods, and balancing various demographics and other considerations, but sometimes you have to just kind of say, no, we have, no, it's, it's not a luxury, but it's more than we really can afford, is what it comes down to. I also think that we may see a very different... I also think that we may see a very different sense from the public, just the way things are changing just in general.
Well, I can't imagine that last year's meeting where it became a very generous give, give, give couldn't be recreated again.
And then everybody went home and left us, but we're first this year, so we're going to be there until noon at least answering questions.
But it, I mean, it was incredibly open about, let's just support this, this, and this, but that's not been the attitude for the years before that. Yes, that was really odd last year in that way.
And I haven't looked at the, at the number, you know, everybody gave us the class numbers at the beginning of the year, but I haven't looked to, you know, to see if it's just kind of a question to have fewer sections around it.
And so then the other question that David brings up, you know, if the merger goes forward and having some children in Guilford or wherever there's space, the other, the other question I don't have clear in my head is if the, so merger is moving forward by the state board, so is the lawsuits moving forward, does that mean that just the people filing the lawsuit wouldn't merge, or does the merger stop for everyone around?
Depends on what the court decides.
If there's an injunction, it stops.
Yeah, if, if there's an injunction, any, anything that the board was going to order stops, but the current, the existing mergers won't. And places that have already merged, that won't change, none of that will change. Those, those quite, those things I don't believe are part of the lawsuit.
But for just a lawsuit, I would still have to follow the law until there's an injunction.
If, if there's not an injunction, we just keep proceeding as if it's not even there.
Correct.
Okay.
I can confidently say that our building is completely full and we're using every single space.
Well, and I, I know Academy is too, and I truly don't want to sound like I'm being, that I'm demeaning or, or they, because I, I have, as a parent, since the very first time I walked in the school, I marveled that a vice principal could be put into the space and have that called. And, and just, and walking into a lot of those rooms and just seeing that there's what used to be like a hallway type thing is now cut in and, what I used to use as a parent to store stuff is now a classroom type space. So, I mean, it's, I've watched it over the years. So I don't want to, I'm not making fun in any way, but I, I still am saying very publicly, I want us to look, I think, when you cut back on students, we have to look at, how can we more rationally use that?
And look outside of the, our standard way of doing it, if the church next to the school has a large room downstairs and some really small rooms that for use like the social worker or those kinds of once in a while, things that are small groups of people, they could happen elsewhere. And we own, we've got a house right next door here that we own, that might be usable for, for, if that happened here. And I don't know.
I like that idea too.
But there, and those are just, you know, off the top of my head ones. There are all kinds, there are other spaces we can consider using and other ways to take advantage of the community resources that people are really happy to have us do.
Right, especially churches, I mean, and Academy is right there, and the church is only used basically on Sundays except for the priest.
Not like schools where they're going all day and all night. It used to be schools were only used during the day, and that was a terrible thing. Now they're used all the time and nobody says, oh, well, okay, that's great, thanks.
Anyway, so we'll look forward to hearing more of your budget updates as they come forward.
I had a couple of, I think I had a couple of questions. Oh, as far as, I guess the, this is the SU budget, do you know, is the, are you considering revenue, considering revenue from Vernon in the SU budget? Because they're not allowed to be part of us, no.
So we're.
So their transportation.
We're moving ahead as if Vernon is part of us, until we get the, the absolute, Vernon is not a part of you. We're budgeting the same way we always have.
But when does that happen? I thought that's November 30th.
Maybe, and if we get that under.
It could be tomorrow.
It could be.
Right, that's what I thought that was, I thought that was the deadline for Vernon.
The deadline is the 30th, but the decision was made today. So it's really just a question of whether there's an injunction or not. And I don't know even if that's been filed, how that exactly is going to work out.
Yeah, no, there, there are Vernon sections on this, and obviously those would be taken out. Yep, the Vernon would have to be taken out. Yes, and then how, I read that would.
That's all we really would be required, because like with, with the literacy coaches and things like that, they continue to be full time even if they don't spend any time with Vernon. And you're, you.
And does the, but the ruling just says that Vernon's out. Does the ruling very clearly say Vernon cannot have any connection with us?
I've not read that.
I've not understood that.
Yeah, I've not read that, that it's been that specific. What I've read is that Vernon has their dispensation that they legislated for, that they can be on their own to keep school choice.
Okay, so then we don't know that if Vernon cannot get supervisory union system?
And I, my understanding, and I thought this was really settled, was that if we become a supervisory district, not a supervisory union, we can't append the choice, uh, choice district. So it's just the structure, we're not allowed to do that. They have to go somewhere where they have a choice. Or someone, like if, if, when the Northeast becomes, stays a supervisory union with Grafton and actually Grafton and the other.
But David, what I understand, that's good, remind me, but then I, I'm stuck on the next part of that. So Vernon is on its own and they have to align themselves with somebody else?
They have to have SU services with somebody.
But they can't contract for SU services with somebody else?
Not with the supervisory district.
They could, but for instance, Wyndham Central has schools that have seven, twelve choice.
With Dover and.
Like with Dover.
Yeah.
Right, but what are supervisory uni, I mean, so, so like professional development? That means that they can't come over and say, gee, we'd like to be participating in your professional development and sit in on that if we pay money to do that?
Professional development maybe, but people like the literacy coach, the math coach, me, all the finances, all of that would have to come through a different supervisory union.
So the lion's share of the money, no matter what, would go through somebody else?
Somebody else, I assume, because they.
But right now, they're part of our transportation contract, for example?
Right, so that would be pulled out.
So Frank has a nightmare to look at.
Yes. Yes, and on top of that, they're, they're changing to a whole new financial structure at state level, so he's going through that nightmare and, and on top of it.
So speaking of that, let's look at E, letter of support on behalf of the early Head Start, Head Start programs requesting a change of fiscal year for accounting.
One more budget question.
Oh, alright.
Is the, the principal mentor in budget again for next year?
Yes.
And is the, the funding from that still going to be from Title I?
The majority of it is from Title I, yeah.
And you feel like we still really strongly need that?
I feel like he's obstrayed pretty much.
For a halftime, okay, yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, sorry, Derek. So then, talking about the change of the fiscal year and, well, the accounting program in general, that brought up this other concern that, actually, we didn't report on that, but that Lyle and I sat with Debbie and various other people from the Federal Review. I don't know if there's anything else to tell. It seemed like she was very happy with everything that was going on.
Yeah, she, she was impressed, and growth was at the top of the list. So we had a federal visit from our program specialist, and this is supposed to be routine every other year event, and there was a records keeper who came along with Sarah. She spent two days with us and we had some time together, the members of the board. And really was, the agenda was really ours, and so we talked about the idea of moving, merging the fiscal year with the ES to match with that of the district, so that we would be starting July 1st and going through June 30th, as opposed to on March 1st to February 20th, which is what we have now. And given the impending new accounting system that we would be part of, that would just make things that much easier. And so, from our end, it sounds simple, but from the federal end, it's a little more complicated because the federal funding year runs October 1st to September 30th, and they're always kind of, they have so much money during that time, and we're actually, in some way, we're going to need an advance in order to bring us to the general first date, so we need the advance in the, basically a quarter of our annual budget, because from February to June is about a quarter. And so that's, that's the war, is that they, they need to find that extra money for us. And it's about eight hundred thousand dollars, so it's kind of an easy one. So that, I, I think that's what the goal is at this point. They're looking.
So I drafted a letter because I spoke and then, of course, people said, oh, we should have that written, to the fellow on the phone. And he, of course, is preaching to the choir as well, but he wanted it as a support document to be able to send to the federal level and say, this is why this needs to happen, it's a one-time thing, we just need to move funds around. I mean, the thing that's funny is that it, to them, it feels like we're asking for more money, but we're not. It's just that the way the money comes through. So I sent that letter to you all before. Did you have any comments on it, or you just want a motion to approve that letter?
I'm moved to approve.
Second, and the only other point would be we'd all sign it and, or say it's from all of us, we just list us all, I guess I can sign.
Is it likely to happen?
He's going to try very hard.
You know, they, they're really in our court, as Jill said, and so the regional office has to make a plea to the national federal office, and this letter will have that plea. It's a matter, basically what it boils down to is that at the end of every federal fiscal year, they sometimes have leftover money for whatever reason. And so they, they have a generated list of programs that have needs, and this actually ranks in one of the highest need categories. So if there's money there, we'll get it, but.
Which technically is kind of funny, because that would mean that there would be extra money next year for some other program, because it would be our money that we. So, okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so we'll move that forward, however, do I need to?
How would you like to do that?
I don't know what's wrong.
We can print it out and.
Does a letter have to go to the school board?
We can make some.
So, yeah, print it out and then I'll stop by, I guess, or I could sign and scan that. She can just email it, that'd be easier. Okay, so still on budget, we wanted to talk about teacher leaders, how they're being used and compensated at each of our schools. So maybe you each wanted to say how many you have and how the budget is.
We have three teacher leaders that are budgeted for. Kelsey's our fourth, but she's not being paid as part of her internship.
You get the fifty bucks for typing a minute, right?
I don't know, she don't.
I assume she gets paid for it.
Do you get paid for it like you're supposed to?
For the notes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So I meet with the four teacher leaders weekly to plan and organize professional development for Tuesday afternoon staff meetings, in-service days, winter sports afternoons, organization of meetings with consultants. We work together on how to support the staff and implementing new initiatives, co-teaching, peer observation model, development of planning rubrics. Teacher leaders consult with different teams in the building, and then each spring, spend hundreds of hours trying to develop a master schedule for the next school year. So basically, they do an incredible, incredible job.
And how much are they compensated?
About five thousand dollars.
Each, for the year?
Yeah.
Jerry?
I have just two, and it's changed over the last few years, depending on the need and kind of our focus. But like this year, I have, in the last couple of years, I've had a PBIS coordinator that there are two mandatory state meetings a year that they have to attend. Also, they've helped facilitate our bi-monthly meetings, do some professional development for in-service days, when we have a PBIS focus, or, and or our faculty meetings, and so the compensation there has been a thousand for that position. And then I've also, a couple of years ago, I had, or last year, I had a thousand that I paid one of the teachers to be like an internal math coach, specifically, you know, because Eureka's pretty involved and this is a teacher who has gone through, what's the math program?
BMI, primary math.
Thank you. And so he was kind of coaching a couple of teachers that were new to the program, and so I compensated him for his, his time, because he was giving up kind of like his, like planning time, so when his kids were going to a special, we created a schedule so that he then could be in a classroom, kind of co-teaching and helping to model that. So that was a thousand dollars. So this year, right now, I have just a PBIS and I haven't really assigned anybody. I'm, I'm thinking with the work that, and I'm seriously thinking about this, I'm not just trying to like, you know, brownmills or anything like that, but I'm, I'm seriously thinking about having, paying someone as a teacher leader for diversity in our building. If not this year, definitely next year, so that, that we're moving through, so that that person can again be part of my leadership team and the focus around looking at curric, helping to, you know, all of us to look a little bit more closely at our curriculum, at some of our, our common practices, and to kind of look for that kind of unconscious bias that, that we might have, so.
So totals so far, fifteen, two?
I have two, I have two in my budget. I've gone up to, I've asked, right now, in my budget for next year, I'm going to be putting in for three, but still it would be two teacher leaders because of that fifteen hundred up these.
Okay.
I have, I had this.
Roll it up.
For you. Our teacher leaders, we have four fabulous teacher leaders who came out of their summer vacation to meet with us, where we developed these bullet points, talked about what they wanted their roles to look like this year. So I'll give you a minute to glance over that. Our teacher leaders also received five thousand dollars as a statement for the year. In addition to, or maybe more specifically, in addition to these bullet points, they worked to help us implement the continuous improvement goals, which we presented about at our Academy night. Culture, behavior improvement, literacy for this year is our big push. And they also have started a PLC initiative this year, professional learning communities, so they are orchestrating that entire thing. We have backed off and let them own it. They wanted to, to do it and they're excited about it. So we have a consultant from Antioch coming once a month, where all six of us, or seven of us with our consultant meet and talk about protocols to be used, and then the teacher leaders plan what will happen at the PLC meetings. So that's a professional development that's done during staff meeting time that they create.
And that's monthly?
Yep. They also come to school support team, which is weekly on Thursday mornings, and they tie in their ideas to the larger school and decision-making process and take things, vice versa, back as teacher leaders to their small meetings to think about how they can help drive things forward that come up.
Comments from the board?
Great.
Last two years, I've had this in place for two years now, and it's made such an impact on the school and the ability for me to do other things. So it's just been a support system that's really helped drive some major initiatives in a very short period of time.
And we do teacher monitoring and, and, yes, and I think that that has contributed to the drop in our turnover.
And is yours compensated as well?
No, but we are, we are considering it, a small stipend of some kind. It's actually a requirement of Head Start, it's a new requirement.
No requirement without funding, we don't see that.
I get, Jill, I guess my only question would be the difference in the.
Me too.
In the stipend amounts. Is it just based on what they're actually doing?
I think my stipend is appropriate.
I think my stipend is appropriate. I put in.
No, I'm not saying what, what is, I, it's just a, a larger difference.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great question. I came up with my figure and model basically based on what Andy had developed at Academy. And I think Jerry's looks a little different.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, we're, being a small school, you don't, you don't have, I mean, we're a small school, so you have, I have seven classroom teachers. I have academic support. And so in, in a sense there, I, when I came up board, there was a teacher who was kind of assigned as a teacher leader and had a private conversation with me that I'm not necessarily going to go into, but just really about, well, at times she just felt kind of uncomfortable. It's like, you know, we're all kind of, we all need to kind of chip in and I don't know why I'm compensated more than somebody else. And so that first year, we, I kind of played around with the whole leadership model, the shared leadership at Oak Grove. And then, so we didn't have, have that. And so it's more of a stipend as opposed to what they're, what, what Mark is describing and even what Kelly is describing is very different than what my teacher leaders are being asked to do. It's, it's, it looks very different. I mean, to, yeah.
That's important. That's, okay, perfect. Then that's what I was kind of getting, but I wanted to just verify.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that. You know, once it hits the airwaves, you know, I might hear something different that people aren't comfortable and why, you know, is that not an option for me? But I, I just think that it's, bigger schools require someone to facilitate more of that collaboration. And I think smaller schools don't.
So I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask you a question. If you were to cut back by one teacher in each school, I mean, is there a dramatic repercussion right away? Is the?
I think there would be. Yeah, I think it would be too much for two people.
I think if we had to look anywhere for, if we had to look through cuts, I would look at the other ways that we do professional development instead of these. Because it's just time and time again, there's more and more evidence that this is really the effective way. And I can't even remember how long the list of it, when, I can't remember the woman's name, it was curriculum coordinator, but she, she did a research project and it was in the eighties, I think, in this district about what people wanted for professional development. It was overwhelming. They wanted to do it in the building when the kids aren't there and they want to be working together, collaborating together. And that professional leadership committees or councils and, and just the collegial model and the teacher leader model are all, aside from giving people careers, you know, options in their career or ways of expanding and retaining and maybe possible for us to retain them, it's, it's more effective. It just works better.
I'd ask if they need their own support system as well.
Yes.
And going from three to two, I think that changes the data quite a lot.
And we look for people with the skills specifically to support what the goals are that we're driving forward. So my teacher leaders, I have someone who's really strong in behavior and data. Someone who's really strong in, two, someone who are really strong in literacy and interventions and special ed. I think it's really important to have that varied team. They're a sounding board that without them, I would be really sad. They're very highly valued to me. Yes.
Well, it's, it's not a change of topic, but I just wonder if there's any way that either through Antioch or some other program, somebody might come in and have a look at this and come and do a, a research project or report on how this is working so we can shit around with other. Because this really is, if you read, if you pay attention to what, what works and what's recommended literature, this is exactly what we're supposed to do. And it needs to be different for different scales of buildings. And a lot of places don't do it. And it's just because they don't know where they haven't, you know, they haven't gotten the information locally or haven't figured out.
Who else is doing it?
I don't know that there is any other article.
Not something to put on your six-page chapter.
But the embedded piece and the fact that then the teacher leaders, like those that are highly trained in literacy have Brian, the literacy coach, who they can also go to. Now with Teen Reed and the math person, they have a person that they can go to who works with them. Much as I would envision if, if we were able to have a diversity person at Oak Grove, the new diversity person for the elementary schools would be able to work with that person. And then there's always someone to carry on that in the school. Because the, the coaches are very highly trained in their specific disciplines. So to have those people then in the school, embedded, it's what we call embedded in the school, working with other, with their peers. As you said, there's, the results are very amazing. There is research out there. I, I went to UCLA a couple of years ago to be trained as a director mentor. Basically, of this same kind of thinking. And there's a lot of research to support the idea that this is the way to go. That it's about having those, those key relationships and knowledge base.
Just, just from experience, it's made just a dramatic impact on our school and the, the number of initiatives we've enabled.
And it's something different because they're your peers. It's not Mark going in or Jerry or Kelly who are the supervisors or, it's their peers coming in. And so there's something to be said about that as well. It's okay to make a mistake because you're here to help me. You're not here to.
To judge me.
To judge me and evaluate my work.
I don't even remember exactly why this came onto our work. I think Spoon asked about it.
I think there was a difference. You know, Jerry said, oh, I don't usually, I don't have them, so we're.
And so maybe just find a look at it.
Yeah. I think, well, how's that work? Or is it?
People are gonna look at us and say Jill's got it on the chopping block. I don't have anything on the chopping block. I just ask all the questions all the time.
It was actually a great question because it really, it, you know, everybody got to explain the need and you don't, and people can watch it and go, okay.
And it's nice to have. And I think it's a great system that we built.
Well, I do, I do think as we go forward with a merger pending some injunction thing, but it is the type of thing that other schools are gonna look at. And in a merged system with a larger board, this would be the type of thing that has to be looked at closely and understood before, you know, if you've never heard of it, you're like, well, wait a minute. You know, we need to look at every single penny. There's twenty, thirty-five.
And, you know, I shouldn't say none because.
Thirty-eight thousand.
Gilford has a person who's just finishing up the MI who's really done quite a number of faculty meeting, PD sessions. Dummerston, the same. They have a couple of people who are highly trained in math and they do faculty meeting trainings monthly. So they don't call them teacher leaders, but it's a similar type structure in a few of the schools.
And I would think Mary probably does the same thing at Vern.
And Vern, yeah, because of her work.
And do they have compensation for those?
That I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, good conversation there. So we have, I think, only leadership councils. We wanted to hear back from you on ideas on how to form. Merger updates, I think we've kind of done superintendent and then open meeting laws. I think we're just down to leadership councils and open meeting laws. And it's only six twenty people and moving us along today.
So I met with.
Nobody was cut off.
I met with Brattleboro Town principals and we talked about leadership councils. We looked at the original articles of agreement that leadership councils. David, are the, the alternative governance, are the leadership councils pretty similar in purpose?
I think almost, yeah. Well, purpose certainly. And, yeah, a couple of parents, a couple of teachers, illustrative, and, yeah. And a student if appropriate.
If appropriate, yeah. And so we talked about it. And I think all the principals agreed that a good place for them to start would be the current PTO or ACT committee or whatever it is called. That would be a place to describe, this is what it is. Are there other people that we should be considering? Looking at how the, how a leadership council might be different from a PTO. But that would be our starting point. I don't know if you guys want to add?
I'll just share that I brought it up at our ACT meeting, shared the Article fifteen document. And just had a conversation about what it sort of means. And had a couple of parents express interest in being part of it when the time comes. So that was great. And also, we talked about it at our school support team meeting and same thing. Just explained it a little bit and had a couple of teachers express interest. So also the document's a little tricky, but one part that provoked a lot of questions at both meetings was where it says, "Parents and other community members nominated at town meeting shall be appointed by the unified district board to serve for one-year terms." So if they're nominated.
That's in the original.
Yeah.
In the original.
Yes.
It's because.
If they're nominated at town meeting, how does that happen?
And I, I feel like that would not probably be how it worked here.
That was a legal thing that they kept throwing at us, how we can make it work. Because you can't, because they would have no actual authority as a board. But the smaller towns really felt like they needed to come from the floor. I think that was.
Yes.
I don't think in Brattleboro it would probably be that way. I think you would probably say at your own PTO meetings, you'd get the list and then somebody would read it at town meeting and it would just be done.
That makes more sense.
But, I mean, that, they would be nominated by being known ahead of time.
Couple of things, one of the things that Spoon mentioned from going to that workshop is the structures and the things that they would be doing. And I think that that's something that we could have a look at. Actually, I was gonna.
It's in the Article fifteen.
The structures and responsibilities.
It talks about what they would, at least gave some parameters. What does it say?
It's a bulleted list. Assistant coordinating local school committees and advisory organizations, including PTO, endowment committee, food committee. Provide recommendations to the superintendent on budget development, capital investments, including building and grounds projects. Make recommendations to the superintendent and principal for school-specific practices and procedures related to policies. Consistent with state statute and procedures established by superintendent. Serve on interview committees for school staff and faculty. Coordinate and review individual school performance data with the superintendent and provide yearly activity reports to the superintendent.
Good company.
Yeah.
Well, I'll have a look at, at that and see what I can find out from the SBA about what they were talking about in the workshop that Spoon was in.
Yeah, I don't know what he had.
The, and the other thing is, was, is to ask if, if it's not already the case, if you would try to identify some parents of color to join the parent groups. And at this point, so that we have, we can hopefully have them involved in the leadership process to me if that goes. I don't know if they, if they already are not, because I don't think those meetings.
We've done lots of things to try to get more people in general. We've changed meeting times. We traditionally meet at six o'clock. We've had a meeting at three o'clock or three-thirty right after school. We have a big sign out in front of the building, PTO night, the whole school day. We do robocalls. We've done a lot of workshops. And we have a pretty large PTO, which is great. But in terms of diversity, in terms of people of color, we've had one person.
So maybe they, we could ask the current members of the PTO to invite people that they know come. Because, I mean, the thing about this council is it really should, as much as possible, a lot of people should know about what's going on. And just, you know, notice this from our meeting, the people that watch on TV are gonna, it doesn't, obviously it doesn't draw people into, into the audience.
I mean, there's not a million people watching this?
They may be watching, but they didn't come to me. It's, it's the kind of thing, we just, you know, we have to make efforts. You know, that just seemed like one that we might, we could try. Or ask the parents if they would do that.
Another positive on, on diversity made me think, we've, let's talk about that. That when, before we started, we were waiting on somebody to come in. Was that it? Sarah hadn't come in. And so our whole discussion while we were sitting there was on diversity and how the town is and with the federal review folks. And the one lady that was there was really impressed by Brattleboro. And she had been here two years before. And she said it felt different to her when she came this time. I'm not sure if she was Hispanic, I think. And so she, she was saying that she really appreciated it and thought that the town had tons to offer in a diverse way. And that she was glad to hear that our board had been discussing it quite a bit and that it was a focus for the town and the select board and all that. But she felt that the town felt very open and welcoming and she liked it. She did. By gum, write that down. Something good.
And it, it came up at the policy council. Again, there's a very supportive response at the policy council. And a real appreciation that there was thought going into it and intention.
Great. So that's leadership councils. That brings us down to open meeting. Did I miss anything? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, that's the big one. There we are. Compensation differences for elementary school and EES. So we've talked about this before and then David had asked, that reminded me in an email and I sent it out, I asked Deb specifically, and she sent it over. And she sent this kind of shocking document. So you want to summarize it, one of you, Lyle and Deb, so that folks who have.
I don't have in front of me. I can give you.
She does.
I have in front of me by reaction. So Brenda put this together for you. I can't take part in this. Brenda did this. The big, the big, the biggest piece to consider when you're looking at these rates is that our teachers work fifty-two weeks a year.
So give everybody the rates so that.
So.
I don't know if this was shared with you guys yet. Oh.
No, I, I think it just went to the.
I meant to send that out. Sorry.
So, and these are, so basically we have entry-level rates and then the, the amounts go up, not by much, but after five years and then after ten. So an entry-level teacher, so we have three sort of tiers, teaching tiers. An associate teacher, an assistant teacher, an apprentice teacher, a teacher, a lead teacher. So a lead teacher would be comparable to what a public school teacher would be in a classroom, a licensed four-year degree teacher. And so a person coming in, entry level, at that, at that level would make sixteen seventy-five per hour for an annual salary of thirty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars. And the sixteen seventy-five per hour would bump to seventeen thirty-six after five years and seventeen sixty-five after ten.
So then let's compare that to our elementary school.
Okay, so then an elementary school at that same level, with that same amount of education, would make forty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So there's about an eight thousand, two, eighty-three hundred dollar difference. And that person doesn't work fifty-two weeks a year.
So to me.
Twenty-five, twenty to twenty-five percent differential.
So my response back to Deb was what I've always thought that that was bad. But when I see the numbers so stark, I say, why would anybody do it? Especially if you're kindergarten versus a five-year-old, I mean, a four- and five-year-old preschool class. Why would you ever take a twenty-five percent? Plus you don't get the, the summer, which honestly, we call it summer. It's really only about eight weeks, right?
Yeah. So the only thing that I can tell you is having started as a preschool teacher myself, there are, there are kind of two quick responses I have to that question. One is just for the love of the age of the children. Some folks just really love working with that age group. And I'm just one of them. And if I could still do it, I'd still be doing it. And the other is that we often, although not always, but often grow our own teachers. So as you heard me say, there are, there are sort of other levels to grow that, that people come in. And we give them college courses and we help them actually get to that point. And so that's another reason why folks will come and work with us.
Very good points. Thank you. But the bottom line is still that's, I don't know, what, what did the town finally decide is a livable wage? They were looking at, did they come?
I don't know if they did. I don't know. Maybe David, that's one piece. Well, I think it's, I think the national, isn't there a national, isn't it like fifty dollars an hour or something?
I don't know. That's what I hear, I guess, fan. I don't know, that's what I hear, I guess, bantered about when they say, "Let's-"
So we're past that, we'll be at that. Many of our teachers have two jobs.
So then the question, of course, becomes how do we move that closer? And in the Oak Grove case, for that Oak Grove base, what salary scales?
Well, we have three positions, so we have one that's paid through the local, as Oak Grove, Brattown, and so that is on a teacher contract.
And that's the teacher.
That's the, the lead teacher. Then we have a teacher, which is a Head Start teacher, so she's paid under Head Start, under her, and so she's under that contract. And then we have a para educator who is under Brattown. And that's, that's a para contract.
What is the para salary?
What is, what's that?
Depends on where, wage grade-
So when they start in, I'm just wondering to compare para salary with the-
Head Start, like thirteen, yeah. This year, it, the starting salary would be fourteen-twenty-eight. That's comparable with our teacher level.
And that's required a four-year degree?
No, 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 not, that's not the lead teacher.
Only the lead teacher has to have the four-year degree. So we're not so far off except for the lead teacher?
Yeah, I would, I would say that, so.
How many lead teachers do we have?
We have one lead teacher in every classroom.
So how many do we have total?
I think we have fifteen classrooms.
Our para educators are required a two-year associate's degree, so, or comparable, and so, and your teacher-
Is about that, yeah.
So that's kind of where the balance is.
So to jump it, we need a hundred and twenty thousand.
You just did some fast calculations?
Yeah, but it's my math, I should always do it by calculator. Somebody else should do it. But if it's eight, if it's eight thousand dollars more that we need to give to fifteen people, a hundred and twenty-
Well, it's not really that, because-
It's not the same amount of time.
If you took your district teacher's salary times fifty-two weeks, it's fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, it was more than that.
If you look at the five years and ten years, or the, the, went to seventeen-twenty-five and seventeen-sixty, whatever, look at what happens on the teacher's salary schedule. It becomes even bigger.
Now, the benefits package, though, is different.
Not that much?
Not that much, okay.
It used to be, it used to be more.
We really try to hold to what the district has. In fact, there have been times when we've offered more. Like, we are holding to contributing ninety percent of health insurance. I would say, and, no, I would say our benefit package is comparable.
So, I'm the one who keeps throwing out money here tonight, but it, I just feel like the, these guys that are working in those positions, one, we have a hard time keeping their staff, but, two, we see what goes on when these kids are not coming in ready for the public school. I mean, we, we've looked at, in the reports, we look at how much time is spent by people doing toilet training, and you say that it doesn't just happen in kindergarten, but all the way through several years. I mean, there's, that takes away from everything else, I don't know, I just throwing in my head, mumbling that this is an investment to-
It absolutely is an investment, and, and, you know, you've heard from Jerry, we, you know, we have a classroom that's only been operating one year, very much a blended classroom, but lots of Head Start influence, and we got five-star rating. That's really unheard of. This is, it's a state rating system, and I know from my colleagues, it's hard to get five stars. All of our classrooms are five stars. And our staff work really hard, even though the children coming into the elementary schools may present as having many issues, I can guarantee you they'd have a lot more if they, if they weren't with us first. And so, you know, when we were talking about how we might measure the longitudinal, longitudinal success of the children, that would be very telling, because it, it really starts at preschool, it really starts before preschool.
Although it would be ethically terrible to do a research study and say, to look at what it is if you don't give the support.
Right.
This is the problem with being on a school board of any place, but maybe particularly on an elementary school board, that there's need and great value of almost anything that's proposed at any time, and there's still limited funds.
Just to throw a little wrench in your number two, how long, you have fifteen lead teachers, I'm assuming they're all not first-year teachers?
Right, they're not.
So you have, it's not just a straight-
No, and this is wrong, according, it should be fifty-seven, not, not-
But even if, even if we were to just, you know-
Just do that, it would be something.
Right, but if you were to put them at the level as, you know, they've been there for fifteen years, they're comparable to a different rate for our SU teachers. So even if you, even if you just do the rates for regular, you know, that we have now for the teachers, and not take into account that is fifty-two weeks, you know, teachers that have been there for, been in the SU for fifteen years, they're at a much higher rate than teachers that have been there for-
This would be just getting at least something-
Yes.
Yes, something would be appreciated.
Right, I wonder if we want to do something where we phase it in or tier it in, so that, yes, it's not exactly the same as what they would be making, but we're making an effort to get there.
The phase in, supplementing the Head Start salaries?
Yep.
I think, well, certainly worth consideration, the thought that I had was that we might do better to put the responsibility where it should be, which is on the state and the feds, and invite our legislative team to come in and talk with us about it and hear our perspective on it.
I think that's great, but I think we've been waiting for them for a long-
And they came up with ten hours, and, and they know that it didn't reach the people it was intended to reach, the low-income people, the people that really need, can't get their tickets. But they, they will be working on that, they'll be working on-
I think we should do that in conjunction. I, I guess, I, I feel like the entire time I've been sitting on this board, we've been talking about this. And we, we've been assured that we've been trying to move forward, but I haven't actually seen us doing something. So I'm, I'm kind of feeling like I'd like to do something.
Can we have Frank put numbers together, put in the budget, and let us see it?
Also, a couple of things to keep in mind, one is that we, I can't remember if it was ninety or ninety-five percent of the kindergarten students that we screened this year had had pre-K, so we don't have the, a glaring need for it. And I think that it's, it's reasonable question whether we even continue the one that we have now.
Wait, wait, what's your name?
I mean, I don't, I think it's a, it's a, it's an excellent program, and those kids are having, getting a real advantage, but in terms of if we have to look at reducing things, if we're already getting ninety-five percent of the kids coming into the, in the kindergarten that have had pre-K, without that program, we might, it might go the other way, without having the Oak Grove pre-K program.
So if we cut the Oak Grove program entirely, you're saying?
That's another option, another alternative. Because we don't have, I mean, I thought we were gonna be putting pre-Ks everywhere because we have this huge need, but we don't have this huge need, we've got most of, most of the kids coming in that have pre-K.
But part of that pre-K was to integrate Head Start with-
Exactly.
So, I mean, that's-
Yeah, and to, to add to the, the effectiveness of the Head Start program.
I hope nobody watching this is thinking, "Oh, my job's on the line," because we're going, we're going through about twenty-hundred thousand ideas here.
Part of the budget process.
It's nothing set in stone or even ideas, it just goes through your head.
Why would we support, put money in the budget to supplement pre-K and not the Head Start and not some of the private providers that are around that also have a five-star rating or four stars, because they're not big enough to have the fifth one?
Head Start employees are part of the public school system, so there's a difference there.
And the public pre-K are, they're-
They're not.
They're private businesses.
Yeah, we don't oversee them, yeah, we're not responsible.
And requirements are not always, the same, well, actually, Act, Act one sixty-six does ask that there be a licensed teacher in all, in all the private centers.
But not all the time.
Right, it can't be that one person is the board here for all of them, it's different.
It's like medical care now.
So it's a different, if it's a different structure and it's a different employer, so there's your answer on why we, on that last question, but that was a good question. I, I, I don't think I have any solid thoughts or whatever, but I wanted to have this conversation. Yeah?
There's lots of research out there that supports what happens with brain development during the sunburn and feces and all of those things that are important to address through building resiliency, and in the Head Start world, that's what we do. And, and so we help children get a Head Start by doing that. I think that the people that are sitting here in this room understand that and know that, I'm not sure that the general public still understands how important that is.
Yeah, a lot of home visits and social services.
I mean, there's lots of information, there's more and more coming out, there's more information about all the challenging behaviors, there's a school in Oregon, Massachusetts, that just had their principal and staff on administrative leave because there was, there were behavioral issues in the school and parents were concerned, and, and I'm thinking, this is, this is the way of the world today. And so if we're not addressing these issues really in a big way and compensating the people who have the skills to do it, then I can't imagine what our world will look like from here on out.
I think our town reps have actually been hearing in the last couple of years and have a pretty good idea that this is necessary and what it does.
I think that a lot of them had their eyes open when Deb did the presentation a couple of years ago for the town meeting reps, and that was shocking information, so.
I have, my feeling always with, when we look at the numbers, is if we bring pretty much the same budget, if we don't increase taxes, we can move things around however we want and they would be supportive of that sort of thing, but if we are increasing taxes by a whole bunch, that's a different story. White House is really on shaky ground.
So I think we have a lot of talking to do.
Well, so, as a board, we're asking Frank then to throw in a new budget and see what happens.
Yeah, and asking Deb to think about, but I'm, I'm thinking about how much more I know from sitting on the policy council about all the things that, all the people that work there, how many people work there and the things that they do, and the size of their caseload and all those kinds of things, and think about a way that we could present that.
So I'm gonna ask Frank-
A day in the life, a day in the life of-
Or just, yeah, here's, yeah, a day in the life of a Head Start user.
Well, that day the nurses came in there, that was very enlightening, so.
I'm going to ask Frank to put in money for Head Start lead teachers to equal WSESU Step Two as a bachelor.
Usually put down a hundred and twenty Ks roughly.
And I mean, the idea, even if we do it incrementally, would be, you know, we've been incrementally giving COLAs, and a couple of years ago-
COLAs, like one percent.
The feds actually gave us enough to bump salaries up by about a dollar more an hour, but this, those are the rates that I, that we currently pay, so.
Administrators have anything you want to throw out here?
Well, I think later on in, in your agenda, we have Brian Bittner, I think, or maybe this was, this came up at our meeting to, he has some really great data to look at kindergarten readiness. And so it kind of goes back to what you were saying, Dave, about, yes, we have maybe ninety-five percent of our students that are in some form of pre-K or daycare or variety of, I mean, they all look very different, but our kindergarten readiness data is not, doesn't look great. And so when we're thinking about eliminating, you know, I know you're just throwing that out there, but you know, you know, eliminating the Oak Grove pre-K program, at this point, I don't care, I mean, the stars are great, but the quality and what, the difference that we're seeing in the kids when they're coming in and already what we're seeing, that they're learning how to be students, and they're learning what it means to like, you know, that, that basic stuff that you, you know, you learned in kindergarten, but it's also getting them prepped for kindergarten. And we're not saying that it's academic, but just in terms of how to play.
Kindergarten's not academic, so it shouldn't be academic.
And, you know, and so, that is part of that readiness, though, and, and I think Brian is much more skilled at describing and sharing that, that data, and I believe he's planning on coming to share that with you, because I think that's important to-
He's the first meeting in January, so maybe you want me to note that he knows that we want to hear about that?
I told him, "Do it now so you don't spend all of your Christmas break gone."
Okay, so then I'd like to move us to, I believe, the last thing, did I lose anything this time? No? Open meeting laws and email communications, and this came out of our emails that we send back and forth, and I said to David, you know, I'm, I'm never clear on this, I'd like Lyle to read us all this so that we know when we're always right and wrong on this thing, so.
So, we do have a policy which you might want to review on electronic communications, it's policy E twelve, and just, I don't want to read the full policy to you, but just to remember that all of your emails are subject to open meeting, and if someone asks for them, they need to be available to them, which is one of the reasons why we had suggested that you get a WSESU email, so that if someone wants to see your emails, you're not having to give them, you know, your personal, you know, this is your specific email for this. And that, excuse me. You can't discuss things and make decisions through, through email. So email cannot take the place of a discussion that you should be having at a, at a meeting. The other thing that I looked at is the Vermont Municipal Assistance Center that also has some facts on open meeting laws, including use of email. I apologize. And that again says-
I already read it.
Sure.
Where were you gonna read, right here?
So I was gonna talk about to whom it applies.
The law applies to every public body of a municipality, any board, council, commission, committee, et cetera, includes, does not apply to community justice. It applies, requirements of law are triggered whenever a quorum is meeting, so that's the majority, for us, it's three or more. Meeting is defined as a gathering of a quorum, of the, quorum of the members of a public body for the purpose of discussing the business, or for the purpose of taking any physical, or taking any action. Law applies regardless of the physical location of the members, the members don't all have to be in the same room at the same time for it to be considered a meeting under the law. Therefore, a phone conversation between a quorum of the members is a meeting. Furthermore, time is not a factor, if a conversation occurs over a period of time, for example, a string of emails, that conversation may still amount to a meeting under the law. This is why public bodies should generally avoid the use of group emails, and-
And someplace in here also, it talks about-
Do group emails violate the law? No.
That's right.
Group emails may be used to schedule a meeting, create an agenda, or to distribute materials, should never be used for discussion purposes. So, I guess I always have to like put it into practice. So what we had done, where we sent around, we said, "So this meeting is going to be backed up into supervisor union meeting, is there any way to change the time?" That's okay.
Yes, because it's scheduling a meeting, yes.
And we say, it's important that we talk about these things, if I write out and I say, "It's really important that we talk about all these things because we have to make these decisions," that's still okay, because that's the agenda.
That's the agenda, but you can't make decisions or discuss things that are going to be on the agenda, but you could-
So I couldn't opine something like, "I think instead of meeting, we should all be protesting out there on the street," right?
Passing votes, yeah.
So you can't give an opinion on anything.
Yep.
The, the little run page at the VSBA Center earlier in here talked about the business of the public body, and, which is, can seem vague, but it's basically, anything that the public body has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power over, so anything wouldn't necessarily have to have to do with money or policy, anything that we have jurisdiction over shouldn't be sending opinions, like I do.
Well, I think basically any opinion doesn't get to come in, right? At any time.
Yeah, exactly, until you're- Yeah, exactly, until you're in a meeting.
When you're at a meeting, right.
Because that's actually commenting on the business of the body.
Yep.
And I thought as long as it was not a, if nobody replied, you could do that, but that's not the case.
Okay, so it's good to have that all clear one more time, because I think
We might want to just kind of revisit it when everybody's here.
Well, yes, because it's, it's tricky.
And, you know, this is quite a long document, but it's very thorough, so I suppose I can, I can send this out.
I think that would be a good idea.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, I have nothing else except for next agenda items. I know we've already sent Barb a few things that we needed to have.
Right, she's got something here. On our work plan, what do we have?
Next week.
Next week, yes.
Yes, we come in again.
I have a feeling Robin and Spoon might have forgotten this was, because it's an off week.
I know, but
I know, but
Yep.
What's on the agenda for this?
It says continuous improvement plans.
I'm sorry?
It says continuous improvement plans for next time.
Yeah, where did that go?
It's December five.
Oh, I don't know what, because I'm looking at twenty seventeen. This is way better.
Twenty, so December five, continuous improvement plans and integrated field review.
Right there.
Yeah, I'm keeping them both.
So David, you'd put that on there. What did you want to discuss for the
Um, oh, I just, I wanted us to keep looking at that field review and keep in mind the things that they said we should be focusing on, because that really is what we're supposed, what we're supposed to, that's what the state wants us to be doing.
So can you look
And what I was thinking about was to have the, when we see your continuous improvement plans, to see if, if there's, or what connection is there. So that they look, and the continuous improvement plans, I hadn't thought of this before. This is brand new, it's right off the top of my head, so feel, have at it if necessary. But the way, they're not really, the form that they're presented in is really around, I think, around standards more than anything else. And, and that, they don't necessarily address the things that are in the, the equity standards. So I just wanted, thought we might try to make them relate more to the, at least the five categories of the equity standard, if not the things that were recommended.
Do you all understand what he's talking about? I'm lost. I don't know what equity standards are and all that, do you?
Oh, that's the, the integrated field review is the report that we got. The five, I think it's five categories. One is academic proficiency. One is personalization, personalized learning, safe and healthy schools, high-quality staffing, and then investment priorities, that we're putting our money in the right places. And so having those reflected in the continuous improvement plans might help us.
So our continuous improvement plans are directed by the state and
That format comes from the state. That's fascinating. And they don't reflect
There's some reflection.
Right, there's the academic component. The safe and healthy schools is part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a really difficult process.
Yeah, it's difficult to read once it's done.
But we can certainly review what, what the priorities are that we're working on this year and the continuous improvement plans. And I think the overlap will be pretty obvious.
And I definitely don't want to add an additional structure to those things. That's more the comprehensive.
So what do we want to do for next week on the
Take that off the agenda.
All the administrators are like, yes.
The government's documents to leave later, about nineteen, is it?
Poor Barb, I'm sending her twelve emails, and so she should have just held it.
I'm sure she's got nothing to do tomorrow.
I'm sure, she loves my email. Move the E E S stop to the second. And please take off the continuous improvement plans then?
Yes.
So it's administrative reports and paraclima reports?
Parent climate reports. I don't know, the ones that we just did in November?
I highly doubt we'll have the results.
Then let's move that.
I actually asked to extend the due date until winter break so I could get as many back as possible, so that's
So let's move it to
So I was hoping maybe we could add in winter sports. If you guys could talk about the funding and how that's working, again, that's coming into budget. And I know it's hard to find, so.
And can we move the paraclima reports to February, March or something? Oh, not March.
I would say February.
When would be
February. February, because we do want it before we go to the town meeting.
So February six, it's an administrative reports night and the early ed partnership focus. We're going to invite the early ed partners up to come on February sixth.
No, you're talking about not E E S, but
Right, the other partners.
The other partners.
The ones we signed the partnership agreement with.
As many of us could come on that night.
We wanted to hear from them, just in general, meeting.
So I guess I better have Janice So
Reach out.
Reach out to them, which means if I give her that date, we're not going to be able to change it, just so you know. That's going to be hard and fast on February sixth.
Hey, talk to the weather gods.
Yeah, yeah, they won't all be able to come, so
No, but I want to make sure they have enough advance notice so they
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
And what do we want to say, we would like to hear from them each, maybe maximum of five minutes each, because there's a bunch of them. But just a general, I don't know, I'm thinking a general overview of their program. You know, the basics, Lyle, of
So we did the hours.
We did that last year. We have some that came
No, no.
They came with Janet, and, yeah, and it was Oak Grove.
Right.
And they came and talked about, yeah, because Mrs. Gaskin was there.
Maybe I wasn't there. I don't know, but I, I mean, I just like to know who they are, if they were five days, five days a week, full day, part-time, you know, what are the hours, how many kids?
How could we help them?
Maybe what their concerns are.
And their concerns, that would be good, concerns. Particularly concerns they want us to know.
After that, we meet with the legislators.
Actually, let's invite the legislators to come to that. You want to take that? Dave, would you do that?
I will.
So that will be February sixth.
Yeah, that is at Oak Grove.
Anything else?
We're back here.
Seven o'clock, we're back here next week, not tomorrow night. Tomorrow night, where are we?
No, tomorrow night, tomorrow night's finance.
Oh, good. It's next Thursday, right after this.
Correct, next Thursday. Are we at the high school?
Yeah.
Yes.
We're at Oak Grove and then the high school?
Just, next week.
Next Thursday is the SU.
But it's Wednesday and then Thursday, so we didn't have
Yes, correct.
And we're at Green Street again next week.
I move we adjourn.
That's what I'm going to do, second. All in good. Aye. You're right.